Board of Directors. Thank you all for attending. Before we get on to the agenda, I'd like to open up for public comment if there's any public comment. All right. Hearing nine will move on to item number one, which is a consideration of the approval of the minutes from January 31st, 2019.
I'll make a recommendation that we approve the minutes.
Okay. Hearing a recommendation from Commissioner Olson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. The approval, item number one, approval of the minutes has passed with all three commissioners voting to approve. Item number two is consideration of approval of amendment number three to the contract extension between Yamhill County Transit and First Transit, Inc. Effective January 1st, 2019 through December 31st, 2019, with the option to include three one-month extensions as needed. Commissioners, do you want to, do any discussion before we have a motion?
We would have a motion first.
Right, but I've noticed that sometimes you have, you open this discussion. Okay, well, do we have any motion?
I would move approval of the purchase order between Yamhill County Transit and Shack D Northwest for the purchase of-
Item number two.
Number two.
Oh, we're on two.
And I would just clarify that it's effective July 1, 2019, not January 1.
Thank you. That's funny that I said that. Thank you for noticing that. Effective July 1.
All right, so I'd move approval of item two.
Okay, any deliberation or discussion?
I don't have any discussion.
No.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Item number two, consideration of approval amendment number three is passed with all three commissioners voting in the affirmative. Item number three, consideration of the approval of a purchase order between Yamhill County Transit and Shet K Northwest for the purchase of four Champion low-floor buses and two Dodge Amerivan minivans in the amount of $657,778.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a recommendation that we approve the purchase between Yamhill County Transit and Shet K Northwest for the purchase of buses named-
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Let the record show that all three commissioners voted to approve item number three, the consideration of the approval of purchase order. Item number four, consideration of the approval of the 2019 through 2021 allocation for the 5310/STF funding as recommended by the YCTAC Committee, or YC-T-A-C.
Yeah. That's a new one.
Yeah.
I would move approval. Mr. Chair?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Let the record show that item number four was passed by all three commissioners, consideration of approval of the 2019-21, 2021 allocation. Item number five, any other business?
I just want to go on record of thanking Cynthia and all the work that our, our new transit coordinator has done and getting everything done. I think our, our whole transit has really turned a big corner and I think it's going to get bigger and better yet. So I just want to thank everybody for doing that.
Yes, and thanks Cynthia and Susan, and thank you for all your hard work. Appreciate it.
And thank you for also being realistic about your deadlines, too.
Yeah, and Carrie. And McKay. Everyone.
Okay, Casey.
All right. Any other? Well, then, I'll call this meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Boom. Four? Four minutes?
That was quick.
That's usually about the time one leaves the table.
I thought there was going to be more discussion, that's why I-
Made it 9:30?
Yes.
Instead of 9:40, instead of 9:45.
I'm sorry.
Okay, should I sign this while I'm here, or for you? I'm, I'm here, so.
two thousand and nineteen meeting of the Amhill County Board of Commissioners. We'd like to thank you all for attending today. And what we're going to do is we'll start off with our flag slip, and I'll ask Commissioner Sturgely to sit in our flag slip.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Commissioner. This takes us to our public comment section. What we do is I do have some public comments. We ask you to limit your comments to a reasonable length of time. And unless I restrict or if I see you running over, I might ask you to actually wrap it up. But other than that, we'll go move on to our public comments. And it looks like for standard public comments, I have three wanting to speak. I have Keith Zug. Is it Zug or Zug?
Zug.
Zug, come on forward, Keith. And if you can state your name and address for the digital record, too, even though we have it here.
My name is Keith Zug. I live at twenty-seven-hundred Northwest High Heaven Road, out of McMinnville, here, out of McMinnville. And the reason why I'm here is back in nineteen seventy-six, back in nineteen seventy-six, the county needed to widen the High Heaven Road, particularly in the area of about a mile, about two miles. And so anyway, at that time, we were asked if we would give our rights to widen the road for our property. And we were asked, we were told, and our problem was, we didn't ask, put it in writing, that they would pave that section of the road after it was given to them. The road was so narrow at that particular time that you, a bus couldn't, nobody could pass a bus even coming down from that, from that area there. So anyway, we were, we gave the permission for it. And we've been, and I know that's back several years ago, but we were told that it would be paved. And it's never been paved. And in fact, the road had, the drains alongside the road, the ditches and so on, have never been widened until a couple of weeks ago, when I finally complained enough about it, that it would be widened. I was always having problems with my driveway. All the water running down that side of the road would come right down into my driveway area. And finally, they put a culvert in there and took care of that. We used to have it where the county would dust the road in front of our areas. And they never, and they quit doing that. So we've had to been paying for that. It's got so expensive now that we don't, we can't afford to do that anymore. But anyway, so those things. My wife's very sensitive to the dust that comes off the road in that particular area. Across the road, they're now going to be putting in a vineyard, across my property road area there, they're going to be putting in a vineyard. And I'm told that that has clout, but I don't know if it does or not. All I know is back a couple of months ago, I was out on the west side of McMinnville, and you have several areas of road that have been paved, and it's long distances between, between residents. Well, from my, from where the pavement ends now at High Heaven to Orchard View, there's over fifteen residences in that particular area, which is just, just slightly over a mile and a half. And so anyway, we would like to have consideration that the, that the county would give consideration to paving that area of the road because of them saying that they did. Now, I don't remember the name of the county guy that said that that would happen. And I'm sorry, we didn't get that. And we should have had that in writing. We didn't put it in writing at the particular time. So anyway, that's what I'd like to have you do is give consideration to it. Has nothing to do with the gates corrupt at the far end of High Heaven. But if they would pave that out, at least up to Orchard View, where it comes up from Orchard View and that, that would really save a lot of problems in that particular area. And so I'd appreciate that very much if you give a good consideration.
Yeah, what I'll do is I'll go ahead and have our county administrator talk to our Public Works Department. And we'll see if we can find a little history on that. So Ken, do you want to do that? And what all was done back when that was done? And we'll see what we can do. And somebody, somebody will get back to you, probably either Ken or somebody from Public Works, Ken or, yeah, we'll make sure, we'll make sure we get back after he has a chance to talk to Public Works and look.
So they'll contact me or say something?
Yeah, they'll, we have your card and address. They'll contact you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Keith.
Thank you.
The second request to speak I have is from Barry Lilly. Barry, come on forward.
Hi. Good morning. My name is Barry Lilly. I live at six-twenty-nine Northwest Jason Court here in McMinnville. I have, I'd like to read an email I sent to Casey a few days ago, and I want others to hear this. Dear Casey, I need your help. A friend of mine from the Homeless Breakfast is in jail. He contacted me through the church where the breakfast is held. He asked if I could sponsor him and give support. I'm willing to do all I can. This young man has nothing. I did put sixty dollars in his account so he can buy some things. And the county charges a five-dollar fee for putting money into someone's account. Go figure. Okay, so the deal is, this friend did not even have money enough to buy toothpaste. I was unaware that they had to pay for the toothpaste when they're in jail. So when I went to the sheriff's down there by the jail, when I put some money in, I asked the deputy at the window if they really had to buy their own toothpaste. And he said, well, of course, we have to buy it. They have to buy it, too. Nothing is free. Okay. I have also been told that the jail, and I have some friends that have had children, kids in the jail, and they, they told me that they have to pay more for toothpaste than you or I would pay at Walmart. So there's an upcharge on that. Okay, I think brushing one's teeth is part of being healthy. And I have to question, do they also have to buy soap when they shower? Okay? Do they have to buy soap, shampoo and deodorant? Do they have to pay for the water they use after showering or flushing?
He says sarcasm until you guys see.
Okay. I am not sure what I expect you to do, but I can't believe cer, I believe certain things are basic human rights. It's hard to rehabilitate a person if he hasn't even been able to brush his teeth for days, weeks, or even months. I'd like to read a couple lines from his letter. This young man turned thirty on February twenty-second while he was in jail. His family is not in the picture. They're from out of state. He has nobody. Okay. Dear Barry, I'm writing to you from jail, unfortunately. I've been here for a month now, and will be here for one month more at least before I'm released and put on probation and drug classes for eighteen months. To be honest, I'm grateful for this, and I look forward to starting, to starting a new sober life. I'm going to need help and a good support system during that time. And you come to mind, as you have always been so helpful to me in the past. How are you, and Barb? Can you please help me with resources? Maybe a sponsor or a reference for my sobriety and my probation officer. Also, I can't reach my family. I have written a couple of letters, but I don't know if they have been received. And could you please, pretty please, put some money in my account? This is a thirty-year-old man, six foot tall, two hundred and twenty pounds, and he's saying, pretty please. This is a 30-year-old man, six foot tall, 220 pounds, and he's saying, pretty please.
Thank you very much. We'll just stay right there for a minute.
I just want to say, thank you for bringing that to our attention. There are a couple of issues, the toothpaste, the soap, all of that. I think we need to find out a little bit more, and then also talk about options, and we can do that as a...
We'll do that.
And I will note that Casey did forward my letter to Sheriff Spencer.
Okay.
So he does know about it. But I wanted to make sure that Commissioner Olson was the lead.
Yeah, the only thing I, other, other...
And no, and I was just, and I'm glad you did that, because, because what I want to say is that there are supports for those who are incarcerated. There are supports for sobriety programs in a variety of different community. We've got nonprofits that go into the jail. We've got NA, AA, Provoking Hope is there so that they can sort of do the handoff as soon as the incarceration period is ending. So if you want us to outline the supports that are available in the jail, I can do that for you, so you have a better idea of what this gentleman's resources are currently, and then what exists once he gets out, because there is an awful lot of support in the community when someone gets out.
I do believe that a sponsor should be a person who has also been through rehab and things like that.
And they...
But I can support in other ways. I just, I was flabbergasted. You have to buy toothpaste?
Well, we'll address that, because that's easy enough to address. The other thing about the, he would get a sponsor through the NA or AA programs in jail. He would get a sponsor. All he has to do is ask for a sponsor. And if you want, we can give you a list of what all he has offered to him.
And I'll get it, too.
Okay, and thanks for coming.
Ken, one question. Barry mentioned earlier, right on when he began, the $5 charge for putting into the county. That's not our charge. Isn't it a charge from the vendor? Is that a charge from the vendor we use?
You know, honestly, I believe so, but I think the sheriff would be better able to answer the questions about the...
Because I believe it's a charge from the vendor we use.
I don't have it right off the top.
Okay, I'll find that out. I'll find that out for you, Barry.
Thank you, Barry, for bringing it up.
Okay, the next person is Stephen Rupp. Steve, your turn.
My turn in the barrel, huh?
Yep. Must have some art.
It must have something to do with art. My name is Steve Rupp. My McMinnville address is P.O. Box 622. Thank you, sir. My residential address is 14921 Hidden Hills. And a few weeks ago, I sent you people a letter about trying to get you to acquire the sculpture that's at the county clerk's office. I'd like to state right off the top, I'm here as a private citizen. I'm not here as a member of the art committee. I'm doing this on my own. The piece of art right now is there on what they call an honorarium. The city of McMinnville has paid $750 for two years. That means the piece is not permanent, and it will go away at some point in time in the future. And my hope is to convince you to make it a permanent part of the county, because it's, first, it's a fantastic piece of art, and second, wow, just a fantastic piece of art. Steve Tyree, the guy that made it, is a very well-known local sculptor in the county. His work is absolutely excellent, in my opinion. I'm a little nervous.
I've never known you to be nervous speaking.
You're doing great.
Yeah.
I'm just writing down what you're saying, so I am listening to you.
So anyway, I gave you an accounting breakdown of how much it would cost you to purchase this piece and make it a permanent part. I have talked to the city of McMinnville, the $750 honorarium. They're not going to ask you guys to cover that as long as the piece remains a public art display piece, which it will if it stays at the county clerk's office. So part of the cost of it is deferred that way. Secondly, I've asked you to, when you, if you purchase this piece, to have it dedicated to Matthew Warwick's, the late husband of Marilyn Warwick's. And the reason for that, again, is it's me personally, but Marilyn has given so much to this county and so much to this state and so much to the city also, I have to say. She's been on land use boards. She served in the legislature in Salem. She's just a wonderful person, and this was, this was the love of her life, as she has told me. And she's done so much for us, I would like to do something for her. To that end, there's $550 in the City of McMinnville Public Art Fund earmarked for something to celebrate Matthew, and that would also be applied. So this piece originally was $5,200. With all the other things going on, it would cost the county $3,150 plus about 85 bucks for a plaque to go on it. So my, my, I'm asking you, almost begging you, to buy this piece. I think it's a terrific piece. It'll be an asset to the county. Yet for some reason, the county moves the clerk's office or something like that, you'll own the piece, you can take it with it, with you, it'll become part of the permanent collection of the county. It will belong to the county. So that's my spiel.
Thank you, Steve. Ken?
Well, and I was just going to say, because I do recall, we did really receive the letter in the packet, and it was coming in at the same time, while we've been getting a lot of community requests as part of the upcoming budget process. And so the request, we weren't aware that time restraint, so it was put with those materials to be considered as part of the budget process. But if the board, you know, would like to consider it sooner, we can pull that and have that as a future agenda item for discussion.
I would like to pull that one and have it myself and have it maybe our next informal meeting for discussion.
Can do.
What is the time limit on that?
It runs out about September, October.
Okay, so we, but we could go through the...
It's not, it's not imminent, but...
So we could consider it during the budget process? It seems like it fits there.
It may be a good way to do it.
And so that would come forward as part of the, when the budget committee and the, you know, in the first week of May?
The public hearing.
Right. The public hearing is where we would add that to the binder with the other community requests, and it would be considered at that time.
Could we give you, make sure that you get the date so that you can make the request in front of the budget committee?
Because we have the written requests, so it'll be in there.
Yeah.
And I can let you know when that public hearing is scheduled to consider all the other requests.
Okay, since it isn't until...
If you'd like, I can email you a electronic copy.
That'd be fantastic.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Steve, I'm going to need your email address.
I'll give you my card.
That's fantastic.
Thank you, Stephen.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you. I do have one, they did...
Thanks, Steve.
Okay, now I think we have one other, and I will turn this over under public comments. I'll turn this over to Commissioner Sterrett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have with us students and the principal of the McMinnville Adventist Christian School. It's interesting, Keith Zug, who did our, who made public comment on the High Heaven Gate, was a former principal of the McMinnville Adventist Christian School. And we also have students here, and the information I have is a small, private school, preschool through eight. They say their goal is to instill their students to shine their light in school, home, and community. And they pledge to view each child as a special gift of God with talents to be developed in preparation for a life of service. The principal is with us, Ms. Fish, and her students are here. And so if you would come up and thank you for coming and being here today.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Can you stand here?
Yeah, sure. Thank you. And what grades do we have here with us?
We have six through eight.
Six, thank you for coming.
This is part of our separate class and our outreach.
Great. Thank you for being here.
And we'd like to open with a word of prayers.
If, yes, please do.
Dear Jesus, thank you for this day. Please bless everyone in here and help them to make good decisions. In Jesus's name, amen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
Yes, we appreciate...
And your pinky nose.
Oh, good. Well, if you have any questions afterwards, we'll be happy to answer them. And thank you for making the trip.
Okay, that's the only public comments I have listed for people that wanted to comment. So we'll move on to item number B, our consent agenda. We have several items on our consent agenda. Their approval of contract between Synergy Health Consulting and Yamhill County, approval of a contract extension between Yamhill County Transit and First Transit, approval of a purchase order between Yamhill County Transit and Skeetski Northwest for the purchase of six new buses, and approval of the 2021 19 through 21 allocation for Code 5310, the SDF Special Transportation Fund funding is recommended by our transit committee, approval of a collection of uncollateral personal property taxes per ORS 311790, approval of yield sign for the northbound traffic on Muddy Valley Road, approval to appoint John Mercer and Jeff Brown to the Road Advisory Committee, or RIAC, each for the next three years. Terms to expire in March 14, 2022. So I will entertain a motion or any discussion.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, we have a motion to approve, approve the consent agenda. I think, Commissioner Cooley, you don't want anything removed from the present?
No, thank you.
Okay, so I have a motion. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Let the record show that Commissioner Sterrett, Commissioner Cooley, and Commissioner Olson all approved the consent agenda. Okay, now it'll take us to item number C, old business. We do not have any old business in front of us, so that will take us to other business. And our first item of other business is a consideration of approval of a contract for services between Yamhill County and Obeck Consulting Engineers for the Yamhailis Westsider Trail Bridge project in the amount of $534,695. So, Christian, do you have anything you want to say on that?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, just to try to help clarify the public comment for this particular item. The board will now hear public comment on Agenda Item D1. We ask that you limit your comments to the specific agenda item under consideration and refrain from making comments that relate to matters currently pending before this board under DACA G-01-18, consideration on remand of ordinance 904 relating to the Yamhailis Westsider Trail. As a reminder, the record in DACA G-01-18 is now closed to oral testimony. For example, if you support or if you oppose this agenda item, you could say things like, I support the trail, therefore I support this project. Or I oppose the trail, so therefore I oppose this contract. I think you should vote this contract down because the record in that other matter is still open. Or I support alternative modes of transportation, and so therefore I support your consideration of this contract. Simply stating your support or objection in these or similarly general terms would be acceptable. However, supports or objections restating or reiterating specific information, arguments or details on the specific issues discussed at the public hearing last week, or directly citing or referring to the details of that process, for example, comments relating to specific zoning, specific permit requirements, standards, or impacts, cannot be allowed. Public comment on this agenda item cannot be used as an attempt to make further oral testimony on the matters under DACA G-01-18. Additionally, pursuant to YC zoning ordinance 1402-06, in a quasi judicial proceeding, the board shall not communicate directly or indirectly with any party or take notice of any communication or other materials prepared in a particular case, except upon notice and opportunity for all parties to participate, and unless all parties are afforded an opportunity to contest such material. Again, the record in DACA G-01-18 is now closed to oral testimony, but remains open for written testimony until 5:00 p.m. today. Written testimony regarding this proposed contract may be submitted as part of the record of DACA G-01-18, just as oral testimony on this agenda item was received last week. Please understand this request is not an attempt to limit public comment, but rather is necessary to preserve the integrity of the quasi judicial land use proceeding under G-01-18, a process the county was specifically instructed to follow by the Land Use Board of Appeals, and that needs to be protected in the interests of all parties and the decision makers. We respectfully ask all those seeking to make public comments, seeking to make public comments to help us by abiding by this request. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. So that being said, we do have some public comments. We'll get into the public comments right now. And the first one, I'm just going to take these in order they were handed to me. The first one is Ken Wright. So Ken, you want to come on forward, please?
I do, do support the trail. I support safety. I support health. And I support connectivity. And these are the three, the three things that we, that we lack in our area when it comes to outdoor activities. So for those reasons, I do support it. Also, a tremendous amount of county time and private time from private citizens went into getting that grant, tremendous amount of energy on many people's parts, both public and private. I would hope that we honor that. Whatever happens, the county does own this property, and whatever happens, if we have an opportunity to use grant funds to improve it, I would hope that you would honor it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ken.
Thank you, Ken.
Wayne Webke?
My name is Wayne Webke. I live at 13775 Meadow Lake Road, Northwest Meadow Lake Road, Carlton. I, at the last meeting a couple of weeks ago, I submitted written, written support. So everything that I said in there is, still stands my support and the reasons why. At that meeting, the decision was postponed, I think, for prudent reasons, to get agreement with ODOT and a commitment from Obeck for, before going forward with a vote on the, on the contract. Having done that and having gotten that, I think now it, and I urge you to vote a yes going forward with the contract, so.
Okay, thank you, Wayne.
Thank you, Wayne.
Okay, John Van Dyke. Come on forward, John.
John Van Dyke, 1255 East Main Street in Yamhill. Good morning. I'm kind of unprepared for this because I was under the impression this item was removed from the agenda at Tuesday's meeting. So I don't have anything written down, but I'm going to kind of shoot from the hip on this. I am opposed to going forward with this contract, to commit yourself to a half a million dollars to build, design, engineer, and build carts that you don't know what kind of carts you You don't have a horse to pull those carts with. And so basically, you know, you don't know what kind of bridges you're going to build because you'd have no master plan. You don't have enough money in your grant to build a bridge strong enough to support emergency response equipment. I did a little online research, and a bridge to support that type of equipment is going to cost you a minimum of a million dollars. And you have $1.2 million grant, you're going to spend over half a million on design and engineering. You can't build a proper bridge. All you can do is pedestrian bridges, and those will not get emergency services there. So basically, I am opposed to this. If this goes through, you will have basically a wagon train and no trail to run it on. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
Okay, Commissioner Primzic. Stan, come on forward. You know what they say, once a commissioner, always a commissioner. When you've seen one commissioner, you've seen one commissioner.
It's nice to see you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Stan Primzic, 493 Southwest Pemberley Loop, McMinnville, Oregon. I was very much involved in the getting this grant from the state. We have actually two grants that go toward this project. I think it's... I think it's critical that we get this design work done. I think it's critical that we move forward with this. We own that property. Something is going to happen with it, and having this property, having this survey done, the work done to design this bridge is critically important, no matter what we end up doing with the property that the county owns. I've been very supportive of the trail throughout my tenure as Commissioner. I think it's a tremendously important aspect to our county, and that's why I worked so hard to get this grant, and I'd hate to see us throw this money away. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Stan. I think I only have, it looks like, one more, unless I'm missing one. And Veronica Hinkus. So Veronica, come on in.
I'm Veronica Hinkus, one-six-three-seven-five Northwest Meadow Lake Road. I support moving forward on this grant and moving the trail project forward and not losing this important and sizable grant. You've heard from me before, but today I wanted to point out that we have a number of cyclists, local cyclists here today. If you guys could raise your hands, folks from the Cranks Group. They are very eager to have a safe route to the northern end of the county where they don't have to risk their lives by riding on Highway forty-seven. Cycling is a great way to stay healthy, especially as we age and things like running and other sports get harder and harder on our joints. You'd be amazed at some of the people in this group. We have a fellow who's in his mid-eighties. I think he's eighty-six, eighty-seven. He regularly drops me on the hills. This guy is amazing. And all of these, most of the people in this group are retirees who are keeping themselves healthy by cycling, and they want to be able to do it here locally and not have to put our bikes in a car and drive somewhere to go ride on a trail like the Banks Vernonia. So the trail is an important resource for keeping our citizens healthy and reducing healthcare costs here locally. Thank you.
Thank you, Veronica.
Thank you.
I supposedly have one more here. Brian, come on forward, your turn. I just kind of used you right in the middle of the wrong pile.
Thank you. Good morning, Brian Schmidt, seven-five-eight-zero Northeast Hendricks Road, Carlton, Oregon. I object to what referenced by Staff Member, Mr. Bonish. Please include Wendy Kellington's letter sent to you on Tuesday.
Mr. Schmidt, you've been advised that you need to keep those items separate. I think it's important for you to understand that the public comment period is at the discretion of the Board. You have the right to attend a public meeting. You do not have the right to make public comment. If you cannot keep your comments in line with what we've described, it is up to the discretion of the Board to decide whether or not to cut your public comment off and not accept anymore. So I ask you again to please keep your comments to the specific Agenda Item, please.
Okay, so she, so there's an email about bridges.
Please keep your comments to the Agenda Item.
Yes, sir, I am, thank you. I haven't mentioned anything about what you're inferring, so I don't know what you're objecting to.
I'm reminding you to please keep your comments specific to the Agenda Item.
Thank you. May I continue?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. So there's no conditional use permit for these bridges?
Mr. Schmidt, that is exactly the item that is the subject of the land use proceeding. So you cannot make those comments during this public comment period on this Agenda Item, please.
Mr. Schmidt, were you talking about how we haven't applied for a permit for a bridge? Is that what you were trying to say?
Correct. The bridge that's under consideration to build right now.
I mean, I think he's talking about the land use.
I don't think the land use approval comes in because this is strictly about a contract with Obeck and whether we grant the contract or don't grant the contract. And the fact that we may or may not have gone through the land use permits yet is really irrelevant from where the, if we're supposed to stay just to the content of the contract with Obeck, we have to stick just to the contract.
Right.
So go ahead, Brian.
So is this just for design, or I thought it was for the construction of one bridge?
It is for the design and construction and the construction management of one bridge. If there is a separate contract issued for construction, that will be later. The contractor, Obeck, would simply do the construction management for that construction contract.
So I'd like to speak to the construction of the one bridge, if I may, please, if that's on the agenda.
If you can make those comments without raising issues that are currently before the Board in that other proceeding.
Well, I mean, I might talk about water and air, but that doesn't, but just, is that okay?
Christian, I'd like.
You can talk about items that are not currently before the Board in the other land use proceeding.
So if the other one talks about farm impacts, I can't talk about farm impacts for constructing a bridge?
Correct.
Can I just, can I, just to clarify? It was my impression that the contract was for the design and construction management, not for the construction.
That's right.
Okay, okay, I just want to clarify.
That's what I said.
Now that you added the word construction at the end.
I'm sorry.
I just wanted to make sure, especially because everything for Brian was a concern.
There will be a separate construction contract, potentially, under this agreement, but it would be a separate contract that this contractor would oversee.
Okay, thank you.
But it hasn't been issued, and it's not being issued by this, wouldn't be issued by the approval of this contract.
So are you attempting to correct Chairman Olson in saying that this is not about construction of a bridge? This is just about designing one?
I think I'm actually clarifying.
Okay.
Because I believe that the contract is for the design and construction management. So the engineer will oversee any future construction.
Yeah, this firm would manage the solicitation process and would then oversee the construction contract, if we get to that point.
Okay, so construction's already been, you already had your hearing on the construction part, and now you're on phase two of getting management for it?
No, we haven't. There will be a separate contract that would then come back before the Board for approval at that time for construction.
There, I think, maybe I could put it this way. Once the design and the engineering is done, then you go out to bids on the contract. If you award a contract for the construction of the bridges, Obeck would be the one that would manage the contractor as the bridges are being constructed. They don't actually do any of the construction themselves. They just manage the contract with the contractor would go out. And until the design and engineering, we haven't even seen a contract for construction yet.
May I comment on the design of the bridge, like how the bridge may be designed, like whether, how wide it is and such?
I think that's what we're asking for right now, isn't it?
Okay, so I'd like to comment on what will be crossing the bridge and what would, how the bridge, how wide it would be and how heavy it would be. My understanding is that nobody knows that, but yet we're paying money to have it be designed, and no one even knows what the design is going to be. If it's going to be big enough to hold emergency vehicles, or if it's just going to be big enough for pedestrians, or what that's going to be, or what its needs are. Also, Chairman Olson, I understand that last time, in fact, I was here when you said it, last time, you had mentioned something about the amount being so big, and you were concerned about that amount being so big, and I just wondered if you still had those concerns of half a million on the hook for a project that might be in limbo, given under other things that we're not allowed to talk about.
You know, I think that's a question, and it's public comment time, and I think as we, when we go around deliberations, we can talk about that in deliberations.
Okay, thank you.
But I've written it down.
Okay, and there has been, communication has been attempted to deliver to you regarding this bridge, and we believe that is, I believe that it is essential to other projects that are pending, and I think that it's very important that, I don't see how the two are separated since one is necessary for the other and vice versa. And also think that when you design things, you ought to have something in mind of how it's going to be, and I know this isn't, you know, all your doings, but you are the one who holds the purse, so to speak, so I'm bringing this up to you. And I'd also like to say that I object, and I ask that a particular email sent Tuesday be included in this record objecting to the bridge and the legality issues and land use issues. And I have serious concerns and object to this. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Brian.
Okay, I think that's the only testimony that we have. John, I think you've already testified. Do you have something new to add? Okay, I'll let you come back up forward then.
John Van Dyke, one-two-five-five East Main Street in Yamhill. And since I did not have my thoughts all written down earlier, I forgot this, and I feel that to proceed with this, it could be a presumptive conclusion to something else that is pending and still open. And so therefore, there's another reason I feel this should not go forward.
Okay, thank you, John.
Thank you.
Okay, all of that concludes our public testimony, public comments. So that being said, I'll move it back around to the Commission for Discussion. And again, this is for consideration of approval of a contract for services between Yamhill County and Obeck Consulting Engineers for the Yamhailis Trail Westsider Pedestrian Bridge Project in the amount of five hundred and thirty-four thousand, six hundred and ninety-five. So Casey, let's turn it over to you.
We need a motion for, Mr. Chair. May I make a motion?
You certainly can.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we deny the approval of the contract for services between Yamhill County and Obeck for the Yamhailis Westsider Trail Pedestrian Bridge Project.
Okay, thank you. Now, we've had a motion, so any questions, comments, Casey?
I have questions for Counsel and then for Carrie Martin, if she has. I feel like you probably are the one who knows some of those. Is it okay if I ask you first? I just wanted to give you a little warm-up time.
Carrie, could you come?
Yep. So, and I want to call you Commissioner Primisich. I'm sorry, I just am in the habit. But so Commissioner Primisich and I think John Van Dyke both raised the question or addressed the issue of more money involved. John asked about, he thought there wasn't enough money, and then Commissioner Primisich was like, well, we have money, or the county has money, and he's worked on getting it. Is there a likelihood of getting more money for construction of the other two bridges after Stag Hollow Creek Bridge? What's the process? Can you explain to me?
So we have the Connect Oregon Six, and that is for the design, engineering, and construction management, and then the construction of Stag Hollow Creek.
Okay.
We also received a little bit of gap funding from the Recreational Trail Program from Oregon Parks and Rec for seventy-five thousand. So those are the two monies that we've already been granted for this project. For the additional two tributaries and what might cross those, we have not applied for additional funding to build those, but they will be included in the engineering and designs that will come from Connect Oregon.
Okay, that sounds great. That is helpful. Yes, and then, this may be a question more for Christian, but you also are intimately involved. Can, I just want to make sure it's not an emergency, right? Can the county drive cars, use the bridge for things other than multimodal, non-automobile traffic if we use these particular funds to build it?
Absolutely.
Okay, because I heard something about how it was just for bicycles and people if we use that money for bicycles and people.
Sure, and it isn't about the funding source, it's about the intent of the grant itself.
Okay.
But for it to be a multimodal and for it to be a transportation corridor, there was long discussions prior to considerations made for emergency vehicles.
Okay.
So Obeck has had, is aware that that would be a requirement, just based on where this is located.
Okay.
There have been many conversations about that.
And I talked with Christian about the possibility already, earlier, that the way that the design and build, or a construction management contract works is that they will be communicating with one of us about the design specs, all of the, what it's going to look like and what it's rated for.
Those are.
I wanted to make sure that you confirmed that.
Yeah, those are all subject to the project team approval. And yes, absolutely.
And there'll be at least one or two people here at the county?
Absolutely.
That's according to the contract, at least.
Yes, absolutely.
I saw that. Okay, maybe you, maybe Ken, maybe this guy.
Actually, all of us are.
Okay.
Yes.
So there's Todd, and Christian, and Ken, and myself, and also the new Parks Manager, Jared Longston.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Okay, great, that was good to know. Maybe I'll direct other questions, too, unless you have any more to explain about it.
Nope, I don't think so.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Christian, would we also be able to design or have this cover a design of a bridge that could be used for a rail line or a future road? Or do we limit our possibilities? Because it sounds like there's at least the emergency vehicle exception.
So the RFP was drafted, and correct me if I'm wrong on this, to build those bridges, pedestrian bridges, following some pedestrian bridge specifications. So I think that was the intent of the RFP. If, as part of the process, there are discussions about, well, we'd like them to be primarily used for non-motorized transportation, bikes, horses, walking, but we'd like them to be built to withstand, you know, and be able to carry an emergency vehicle in the event of an emergency. I think that's a discussion we can have with them and see if that substantially changes the scope of their bid and any of the other, you know, details of the contract. But I think that's an item that would be appropriate to discuss with them.
Okay, that sounds great.
If we get to that point.
And then, heads up, Ken, a good question for you. This guy might remember, too. Thank you for your patience, everybody, I just need to do this. Do you recall the cost for the engineering on the Laughlin Road Stag Hollow Creek Bridge that we just, I know. I know it's in the order of magnitude, but I don't remember if it's, I feel like it was like four-seventy-four, something like that, for an, essentially an already-designed bridge?
I don't, I don't have that off the top of my head.
Okay.
Yeah.
Christian, do you recall?
I don't.
Okay. I believe that one of the comments that John made was, there was a concern about that this was taking a lot of the cost. Carrie?
So.
Yes, you were.
What I can say about this is that when, so prior to us receiving that grant, there were a lot of conversations because we had to ask for a specific amount.
Yeah.
And so the two issues are that there were initial, there were two initial scoping that were done to give us the parameters of what this would cost, not only to do the design and engineering, but the construction as well.
Okay.
So we had broad guidelines to begin with. And then the second issue with regard to the ability for emergency vehicles, this was referenced before, but there are guidelines and manuals that have a reference specifically in RFP that will guide that process of design, and those specifically call out emergency vehicle access.
Great, thank you for specifying that. Well, I just recall that the Stag Hollow, the Laughlin Road Stag Hollow Bridge design, even though it was essentially by the same company, design and engineering company that already did a design for the bridge, just that the design and engineering is somewhere in the order of four hundred thousand. So just to put it into perspective that this is the design of three bridges and the construction and management of one.
Correct, okay.
Any other comments or just questions?
I mostly had questions.
You have questions, no comments?
Not right now.
Okay, Mary, your comments, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My comments are, I really do, that really run true what Mr. Van Dyke said about the presumption that this other matter before the Board will be voted, approved in the affirmative really does sort of, it really taints this whole discussion, because if the Board goes ahead and acknowledges that this is a grant we want to go ahead and approve, if the other matter, if the other matter is not approved, then this really becomes really moot, and it becomes a waste of money that we would then have to pay back. So a couple of concerns, that we have made a presumption, you know, de facto presumption that this is going to go forward, the other issue is going to go forward by accepting this contract. The other thing is, the question was brought up, why are we, you know, why would we possibly want to not accept this grant? I think when we have this dependence on grant money, we look at every grant as if it's not somebody's tax money. We look at it as if it's an unending source of funding. If you look at what the State of Oregon is facing now, we've got, there are forty proposed taxes coming out of the legislature this year because of perceived or real shortfalls in revenue. And for us to assume that this money is going to be there when we need to go back to the well for more, because this is just for construction, for design, we're going to need to go back for. for construction, and keep our fingers crossed, like we're doing with the bypass, that we're actually going to get enough money to complete the project. So once again, I know we've put time and money into it, but it doesn't mean that because we've, we have time and money into it that we need to throw good money after bad. If this thing doesn't fly, we are on the hook for at least half a million dollars, and I think it would really be foolish and risky for us to put the county on the hook for having to pay back that money if we've got problems down the road in what looks like it could conceivably be a litigious process going forward, because this trail is not a done deal. So I think it would be, would be foolish of us to go ahead and approve this contract when we don't even know, we have no master plan. We don't even know what we're building, and yet we're building, we're designing bridges. Thank you.
You know, I think... Chair Olson, do you have comments? Yeah, I do have a few. You know, I've, I've agreed with everything, you know, most of what Mary says. I don't necessarily agree with the taxpayers paying for all the grants, because we can look at everything like that, we can look at law enforcement, we can look at criminal justice, we can look at Health and Human Services. And if the really, the aspect is, is that because of the taxes and the grants, many of those grants come through taxes too, we shouldn't be accepting any grants then, well, no matter what they're for. And so, I don't necessarily buy into that, Commissioner, but the thing that, that I have, and I've, I voted no on this the first time, because I felt that looking at the dates required by the grant, that we couldn't possibly meet those grants. So, I asked staff to go back and work with Obeck and work with ODOT to see if those, if that could be rephased, to give us a much higher probability of being able to complete the engineering and the design, and if we did award a contract for construction, the construction management. But I don't, that being said, I don't think it's a waste, I don't think it's a county's waste of money, because sooner, sometime, I believe this trail is going to be built. When? I don't know, but I believe it's going to be built. And if we actually do the engineering and the design, my feeling is, is that's our work product, and we take, we take ownership of that design, and we take ownership of that engineering. It's not like we're throwing that, we will have that design, and we will have that engineering, because it's part of, it's part of their work product, product. So, I don't really think we're throwing away that, taking a chance of throwing away that much money. But, but staff did exactly what I asked them to do, and I've read over the Obeck statement of work several times about the bridges and everything, and I think, I feel comfortable now that we should move forward, we should move forward, so. Casey?
One more comment. I forgot to include, because I was focused on getting my questions answered. But again, it's funny, I was just going to address Commissioner, Commissioner Primisich, your comments also reminded me of how we've been working on the bypass, how we, we managed to get funding for the design, and once we had the design, we could, you know, do the, we got the right-of-way, and then we got the, the money for the design. And then the argument has been, if we get the money for the design, then we can get the money for the construction. I don't know why I'm talking specifically to you, except that that, it was your comment. And that has proved to be true with the bypass, which was a much, much bigger problem, and much bigger challenge, both financially and because it ran across a lot of farmland, and it's a very wide swath. And that rang true for me too, with this situation. And so I really appreciate you, maybe even you didn't make the connection, but I made it between what you said and the bypass. So, thank you.
Okay, any more comments? If none, Mary, will you, will you restate your motion?
I move to deny the approval of the contract for services between Yamhill County and Obeck Consulting Engineers for the Yamhallas West Sider Trail Pedestrian Bridge.
Okay, we have a motion, I'll entertain a vote. All those in favor of denying the, or not taking, not taking the grant, or denying the grant, signify by saying aye.
I'd just like to clarify, it's, we're not taking a grant, we're either, we're denying approval of the contract.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes, that's what you're, we're denying the approval.
I didn't want to vote against the grant.
Okay, we're denying approval of the contract.
Okay.
Okay. Aye.
Okay, all, all those that vote in the negative, or...
Opposed.
To, opposed to...
To the motion.
To the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So let it show that Commissioner Primisich voted...
[laughter]
Sorry, Stan! I would never say that!
For a year, I called you Commissioner Primisich, I can't get it out of me.
I just looked at you, I told you I was here. Yeah, you know, so let the record show that Commissioner Starrett made the motion and voted not to go forward with the contract, and Commissioner Kula and Commissioner Olson stated on the opposite, to go ahead and move forward with the contract.
No, Christian, you actually...
Actually, actually.
Now, we would forget.
The motion was defeated two to one, but you would need to take a second motion and vote on...
It would have to be another motion.
On to approve the contract, because all you've done now is, is vote down the previous motion. So you would still need a motion to approve.
Casey? I would make, entertain a motion to, or no, I would make a motion to approve the contract for services between Yamhill County and Obeck Consulting Engineers for the Yamhallas West Sider Trail Pedestrian Bridge Project.
I know how this is going to come out, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Let, let it show that on the record for accepting the contract, both Commissioner Kula and Commissioner Olson voted in the affirmative, and Commissioner Starrett voted in the negative.
How do you vote, Commissioner Primisich?
You're not going to say anything?
We, we adjourn, maybe, we can find out.
The way you voted, Mary, I voted the other way.
We're used to, we're used to that. We're used to that. Okay, thank you, everyone. We still have some more agenda items to go through, so if people aren't interested, we'll take about a two-minute break, just to let people get out of the room before Okay, I'll call the commission meeting back into order, please. We do have a second item of other business, and that's on a resolution, so Mary, do you want to talk about that a little bit?
Mr. Chair, I'll talk about the Part A of this.
Yes.
And that is that a while ago, Association of Oregon Counties took a position on two particular bills that would have an impact, a negative impact on our logging and trucking industries, specifically in the West Valley. So I sent information to those who were asking us to support House Bill 2656 and House Bill 2659, giving them reasons why we were against these. It would be drastic for timber owners on a number of different levels. One has to do with, with water supply, and one has to do with managed timberland being assessed as commercial. So I've written up what is in front of you, what I would like to submit as testimony to, to the sponsors and those on the committee considering these bills. And basically, without getting into, it's a very, they're very complex bills, and what I'll basically say is, is that the, this has to do with managed land and timberland that would be, would actually be impacted under the guise of protecting these areas based on drinking water availability. So I am proposing that the Board, and I've written it up, that the Board consider these concerns to safeguard our timber industry, would include unfunded mandates for county assessors, it would be detriment to our, our timber producers, and if you would agree to this, that's in your packet, I can submit this today. Commissioner Kula, you had asked that the constituent representing the timber industry write this up in form of a resolution, but in any event, I would like to have your approval to submit this letter to our legislators to urge them to consider the negative impacts of these two House bills.
Do you know when they're going to have another hearing on these House bills?
They did have a hearing, the, they had a hearing, I believe it was Tuesday, or, I'm not sure, it was Tuesday or Wednesday?
I think it was Tuesday, yeah.
Tuesday or Wednesday, it might have been, no, Tuesday.
I think it's Tuesday.
And Commissioner, former President of AOC and Pope County Commissioner Pope went before them and did submit some testimony.
Okay.
This is a little bit along the lines of, of what his concerns and AOC's concerns were. So I would just ask that you approve us sending this letter in for testimony, written testimony.
I, you know, and I'm not, I'm not opposed at all, I'm a little troubled, because I wasn't in on that, that, I didn't sit in on that committee meeting Monday, Monday.
This wasn't, this was addressed in February.
Or in February.
We, we...
Do you know how, do you know how ONC counties, if they're taking a stance on this at all?
I don't know if they have.
I can guess.
But I can guarantee that it would be, they would not be supporting it.
Well, that's, that's, that's what I'm thinking, but I haven't checked with them. But I have, as a county commission, I have no problem in support, in writing that letter, or have, signing on that letter.
Okay.
And I've heard from timber owners, forest owners of all scales about these, so, yeah. Thank you for drafting it, and I appreciated the, the table in it.
Oh, yeah, talks about the fact that timber jobs, forestry logging, and wood products, and, and trucking jobs pay far more in our county and overall than service sector jobs and other, other jobs. So this would be economically, this would be a hit.
Yeah, we can't afford, especially in the West Valley, we can't afford to lose more mills.
All, all I wanted to do, because I wasn't sure if there was a motion that was made, and so I just wanted to make sure.
Sure.
So, for Carolina, so we can make sure, because this isn't an agenda item.
Right.
It's an add-on, so I want to make sure that we're able to capture what the motion is for the record.
I would make sure that we approve the letter as written.
So, to approve our opposition as a board to House Bill 2656 and House Bill 2659, and to submit this letter as written testimony to our legislators. And as far as the resolution goes, I, I don't know that we need to do a resolution.
I mean, with this letter, we don't really need to do a resolution.
But if we have this letter, would you agree that the resolution might not be necessary, since it is, in essence, what the resolution says?
Yeah, the, yes, the, do we, do we get to discuss now, is that how we do it with the motion that's on the floor?
Well, we need to...
Yeah, there's a motion.
We need to, yeah, discuss this.
Okay, so that, yes, I just wanted to make sure that we were still on the process. Yes, the constituent, the landowner and forester commented that he felt like his resolution did more to address the water, the water supply one, but I want to make sure that it gets there quickly, so.
We can do, we can do both.
Do the, do the, do this and then do a resolution.
So we would have to read the resolution, but let's do this separately.
Yeah.
Ken, is that right? We'll do this separately?
We read that one first, right?
And then the resolution be separate. So this doesn't have to be read, but the resolution does.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
So I, I make a motion that we submit this letter regarding our opposition to House Bill 2656 and 2659, and that's what we have on the table right now.
Thank you. Have all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing ended, it showed that Commissioner Starrett, Commissioner Kula, and Commissioner Olson all voted in favor to go, go on record in sending information to the legislature regarding HB 2656 and HB 2659.
Correct. Now, the next one is the resolution, if you want to submit that, because Commissioner, it's got more, more teeth on the water issue.
Do you have a paper, or should I, do you, or you want to follow along?
Yeah, I...
Do you...
Thank you.
I would rather myself perfectly, if we're going to submit this letter right away, I'd perfectly like to have, maybe Tuesday, bring up the resolution at Tuesday, and then we can read it out loud Thursday.
I'll tell you why, there is, there is a time consideration, so if we were going to pass this resolution and have it mean anything in terms of these two House bills, I would suggest that we do it when we do this, because...
Okay, no, that's fine, that's fine.
Let me, oh, we, we have not made a motion yet.
We have to read the resolution.
And then make the motion.
Or you can make a motion to adopt.
Because we haven't, so we're talking, but we haven't made a motion.
Correct, read it into the record and then vote to adopt it or not.
Yeah.
Right, okay.
Okay, you want to read it in?
Well, I was just recalling that you expressed at some point a couple of months ago, or a month ago, it hasn't been that long, a concern about receiving something and not having time to have read it.
No, I did read it.
And so I really want to respect Commissioner, Chair Olson's saying kind of the same thing.
Well, I, I think if the resolution reflects what the letter says, then I'm, I'm okay with it.
Okay.
So if you'd want to read it into the record.
Okay.
But we need a motion first.
We need a motion.
That's right. I, let's see, I make a motion that we adopt the resolution opposing HB 2656 by the Yamhill County Board of Commissioners.
Can you read the resolution?
Whereas 54% of Yamhill County's forest land, including 171,000 acres of private timber forest land, which produces fiber supply for four Yamhill County wood product bills, and generates over 1,300 local family wage jobs at higher than state average annual wages. Whereas HB 2656 decimates the ability of private landowners to actively manage Oregon's working forests by prohibiting road-building regenerative forest harvests and clear cuts and the use of pesticides and fertilizers. Whereas Oregon's forest lands are currently managed under Oregon's Strict Forest Practices Act, which is based on the best available science and already provides the perceived benefits outlined in HB 2656, and will continue to do so, following its built-in monitoring and modification procedures. Whereas HB 2656 is unnecessary to protect water quality, as the Department of Environmental Quality data confirms, the best water quality in Oregon comes from forested watersheds, including those with active management. Whereas maintaining the productive use of private forests is critical to the economic and social stability of many Oregon counties and communities. Whereas HB 2656 increases the cost of managing forest landscapes, encouraging forest land conversion to other land uses, and making it difficult to keep forests as forests. Whereas HB 2656 provides almost unchecked opportunity for non-native invasive weeds, such as Scotch broom, Himalayan blackberry, and Japanese knotweed to flourish, choking young trees, forest roads, and repairing areas, impacting fire protection and wildlife habitat. Whereas HB 2656 forces private management practices to mimic those on forest, federal forests, where overstocked disease and inaccessible landscapes have generated 86% of acres lost to wildfire in Oregon over the past decade. Whereas carbon emissions from wildfire smoke emit millions of metric tons of air pollution are costly to rural economies and negatively impact Oregonians' health. And whereas Oregon produces more softwood lumber and more softwood construction plywood, which store carbon than any other state in the nation, accounting for 17% of United States softwood lumber production and 29% of United States plywood construction. And HB 2656 would remove Oregon from its position as the number one softwood lumber and plywood producer in the country, shredding the United States' primary source of renewable, carbon-friendly building products, to be replaced by other producers of alternative carbon-friendly building products, to be replaced by other producers of alternative products in other states and countries. And whereas HB 2656 provides no improvement in water quality from forest, yet causes economic harm to Oregon's rural communities and forest owners. Therefore, it be resolved that the Yamhill County Commissioners go on record opposing HB 2656.
And 2659?
This is just for HB 2656, which is why it's important that we have the letter as well.
Sure, absolutely.
I'll move that we adopt that, adopt the resolution.
Okay.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, let it show that Commissioner Kula, Commissioner Sterrett, and Commissioner Olson all voted to approve the resolution.
Thank you.
Get back to our agenda, agenda now. That takes us to public hearings. These are legislative-type public hearings. Our first public hearing is a mask gathering event, application for the 2019 Memorial Weekend Boat Races event on May 23rd, 24th, 25th, and 26th, and the applicant is the Newburgh Boat Club, Boat Club and the Columbia Outboard Racing Association. So is there anybody here who would like to talk to that item at all? If you don't want to talk, that's fine. Don, do you want to say something?
They've been waiting all morning.
It's my first time to vote on.
Now they're not going to talk?
We had to get one of you up here.
And he was smiling the most, so.
Oh, Don's always smiling.
Don Schmidt, I live at 1604 North Meridi in Newburgh, Oregon, and I'm the race chairman this year for our 71st outboard APBA sanctioned race. This is our 71st year of having an APBA sanctioned race, and we've had races on Lammert River turn back into the twenties that we've found trophies for. This year, we'll be running our normal stock outboard, outboard performance craft classes, or J class, which is the little eight- to 12-year-old kids, which we do have, one of the guys running down here was the national champion last year in that class. And we'll be having the North American Championships for the Sport C class, which is an outboard performance class. It's a 60 to 65 mile an hour boat. We'll also be having the National Championships for the 45 SS class, which is another class that runs about 70, 75 miles an hour on the river. And it's, this will be the last year for that class. That class is being discontinued as of November, and those boats will move into a different style of class that's more competitive. We've also been asked to do the divisionals for what is called the Nova C class. And again, this is a class where racers are moving into it, and it's a class where they run a spec motor that is sealed, and then at each race, they're actually given the prop that they're going to run. So it's a very competitive class, and we're doing the Northwest Divisionals for that class. So with that said, we'll have somewhere in the neighborhood of 100 to 110 entries that we normally have. And we are asking for exclusive use of the Rogers Landing and the boat ramp, starting at 5:00 PM Friday night up through, basically, midnight on Sunday. And that allows us to maintain the people that are down there, as far as people coming in and out. And the other thing we're asking for is use of Thursday night, of being, to be an open boat ramp, but allowing camping down there, because we do have people that come from California, Canada, Region 10, which the region we're in even includes Montana and Idaho. We do have people that like to beat the traffic, especially coming out of Seattle that come down on Thursday, and there will be some boat members that also be camping down there on Thursday night. If you so desire, you allow us to do this.
Any questions for Don? Casey, do you have any questions?
I have some questions. Now typically, what we've done is we've waived everything but the real core cost to the county, the $200 and.
We have the, you know, we've done this, remember, ninety years. The fee is generally $2,338. In the past years, we've only, we've waived all but $250, and that would, that's because they put it in the newspapers, and that is just money, and that is just for our staff time as well. So if we wish to do that, that would be part of the order, which would be ready next week.
Okay.
We did email all public agencies related to the event and received no comments back. Their marine board application was signed by the sheriff last week, and so that's been approved as well.
Thank you.
And Casey, primarily for your edification, the fee's been waived historically because there have been recognized charitable components to these events, and also to recognize the economic development that these events bring to the community. So I don't know if the board has any questions about what the charitable components of this year's event might be.
And it has been typically the same thing every year, hasn't it?
Yeah, we do have certain things that we do donate to every year, and one of the things we're adding this year is we're going to start donating to the VFW there in the community.
Nice, okay.
One of the things that they've been doing is building wheelchair ramps around the community for people that need them, and those ramps cost them about $500 a ramp, and we're going to donate enough money to build one of those ramps.
And I've heard from people who've actually had help from the VFW building ramps, that when they call them, they come out and the ramp's done in a day. So nicely done.
Well, we do have some of the VFW members in our organization, and so, you know, it's just one of the things that can help. And then one of the things that we also do is on Sunday, we have the VFW come down during one of our intermissions, and they give a 21-gun salute, and we have a moment of silence, and we also have a reef that we put in the water.
Nice.
It's very nice.
In addition to that, they also do clean up the park, cleaning beforehand, which is really helpful to our parks department.
That's great.
You know, this is garbage before the event, so that is, you know, quite charitable as well.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
And one of the things that we pride ourselves on is after the event is over, we do make sure that we have the park as clean, if not cleaner than when we move down there.
What could be wrong?
And I can speak to that, as the former parks manager for nine years.
It's very handy.
You know, so as the, being the parks manager for nine years in the partnership with the boat club and the event every year, you know, I can say that when the park is reopened back up for public use, you know, I agree, it's better than, you know, they do a fantastic job. It can't even tell that there was such a large event that occurred over that weekend, so I would just, you know, echo that statement and just reinforce that.
That's great. And camping's fine, we're good.
Well, that's part of it, you know, that granting, you know, it's something that we've done every year. Of course, there's no camping in the parks.
It was expanded to Thursday night as well, but it has been that way for now, a couple of years, I believe.
So they're basically requesting a waiver to the no camping rules for county parks.
Sounds good. I just wanted to make sure that that was.
You know, for your benefit, Casey, a little bit of the history of that park is, the boat club is the club that originally developed that park.
Okay.
And it got to the point where in 1972, it became just basically too much work for the boat club to handle, and that's when they turned the lease over to the county.
Nice. Thanks for the history. I'm sure glad we have it, so.
Oh, sorry.
Or I should say, I'm glad that the community has it, not specifically the county.
So the board order that comes before you next week will also address issues of traffic control, parking, security, temporary restroom facilities, temporary fencing, concessions, insurance, and the like. So you'll have an opportunity to review that before you consider the formal adoption of the board order next week.
So we're going to have a return, we'll go ahead and have staff.
Thank you, Don.
We'll have a formal.
If you, yeah, if you wanted to make a motion to approve, and then we'll provide you the written final.
Okay, I'll accept a motion.
I'd take a motion to approve the permit, the mass gathering permit application.
Correct.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, let it show it past the Commission, Commissioner Kula, Commissioner Sterrett, and Commissioner Olson all voting in the affirmative.
And we'll have the board order prepared and back to the board for consideration next week.
And the fee will remain at $250, waiving the rest of the fee.
Waived all but the $250 of the fee, thank you.
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks for waiting.
Yeah.
Who would we give the?
To our legal lady.
This is our secretary.
Thank you, thanks.
Okay, Commissioners, the next, we have another public, legislative public hearing, and this is for a mass gathering permit for the 2019 Wildwood Music Festival event on July 19th, 20th, and 21st, and applicant is Kimberly Hamlin. So Kimberly, you want to come forward?
Okay.
Yeah, both of you.
Since she got out of it last year.
Yeah.
Only last year, right?
Only last year.
Accountability, people. I'm Kim Hamlin, address is 22900 Southwest Pittman Road, Sheridan, Oregon 97378. And yes, we're in our eighth year this year for the Wildwood Music Fest, and it's been a great success. So I think last year, we had about 1,500 people, so it's been, I don't know, every year it just gets a little bit better, and we get everything a little bit more organized on our side, and a little bit better for our patrons, so.
But we are, we feel like that's a very good place to start, so we're not hoping to grow from there. That feels like it's a really, like, it's still community-based, kids are running around, and nobody's afraid of what's going on, so it feels really good, so we're not hoping to push it anymore.
Yeah, that's, 1,500 felt like, okay, we got this, like, this is like, we're happy. So it was very, and then we can work on improving other things instead, so.
Okay.
And we still do a big charitable donation every year.
Any questions for Katie or Kim? Any questions?
Just the fee, because I remember, was it Food Bank and some youth nonprofit?
Yeah, we do a bunch of different ones.
So the fee would be, again, we could waive the fee except for the $250. Mikaylee, is that, is that okay?
$250 for them, that would cover the cost to be at the youth register February 1st, or March 1st, as well as administrative costs.
Okay, so that would be.
Okay. You don't want, weigh in with anything, Christian, or?
Farmers and Tina Miller Youth Foundation, West Valley Campus, we're able to give thousands to those.
I think we gave about $5,000 last year, just out to different community ones, and then we do a big, a Food Bank raffle, where we get, we give tickets for the next year's festival, and then we get all the musicians to donate a CD, and we raffle that off during the festival, so we gave money, and then we match it as a festival, too. So we kind of try to get everyone involved and really let them know that, like, this is really helping our community, and we try to get people to spend their money locally and like, you know, like, put it down.
And also allow charitable organizations to have, you know, we partner with, as far as for fundraisers and things, with the senior grad night is one of them, and the football, the football team did our dishes last year, so.
Hopefully again.
So a lot of different, especially with the school and community organizations that are looking to earn some money for fundraising, we are able to partner with them and either pay them directly or allow them to have a space to sell and, you know, be a vendor for no cost.
Awesome.
Okay, thanks. You have any questions, Casey?
I don't. I confess that I went to the very first one.
You have anything that you're letting, you're letting your great legal assistant weigh in.
That time of year is hard for farmers.
I know, it's hard for us.
At least once you don't live in the West Valley.
Easier for Commissioners.
Chris, I'll call on Chris and see if legal counsel, anyone has any?
If you have any other questions for the applicants, if anybody else here wants to testify during the hearing on this matter.
Does anybody else like to testify anything?
Just for clarification, this is also emailed at public agencies, and nobody came back with any issues or reports, and we didn't get response back from the fire department as well as the public health officers, and no problems.
Great. Okay, thanks, Mikaylee.
Then you can close the public hearing and then.
I'll close the public hearing, I'll, can you motion?
I make a motion that we approve the mass gathering permit for the 2019 Wildwood Music Festival on July 19th, 20th, and 21st, and that we waive the fee except for the $250 county expenses.
Thank you, Commissioners. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, so let it show that the Commissioners unanimously approved the mass gathering permit for the Wildwood Music Festival with Commissioner Sterrett, Commissioner Kula, and Commissioner Olson also voting for approval.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, thanks a lot, good to see you.
Bring these written findings back to you for adoption.
Okay, and so we'll see that one next week then, to Christian?
Yep.
Okay, that'll take us, take us to announcements, and I know we went through a lot of announcements, discussions Tuesday. Does anybody have any announcements or discussions?
I'm going to save mine till Tuesday.
I'm saving mine till Tuesday. Casey?
I think I'm good.
Okay, that being said, meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.